We're just gonna get started. Alrighty, I would like to call to order the April, excuse me, sirs, gentlemen, we're starting the meeting, thank you. Great, I would like to call to order the April 9th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting, and I will start with roll call to my left.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
David Trask.
Tim DeRoche.
Darren Finnegan.
Okay, so I see we have two full members who are absent, Ryan and Brian Smith and Riley Bergeron, so I will be elevating Bob to full membership with voting privileges. Okay, so the next item on the agenda are the minutes, so I will either seek a motion to approve the minutes, or if there's any amendments, let me know.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Alright, so the next item on the planning board is our policies and procedures, and I know that we reviewed this last month as well. So, I thought I recalled when we had our meeting that we wanted to see the red line versions, which I really appreciate, I know that in our packets it's blue, but online it was red. So we asked for two other things, and maybe I'm missing it, and you can show me where I could find it. One, I think we wanted to know when each red line version occurred, right? Like, was it like all on March 12th, or between the timeframe of, you know, 2023 and 2024? So I think we want to see a little bit of progression, I understand that seems like a lot of work. And then the other piece as well that we wanted to see is, with some of these like full, full changes, you know, is it more stringent, is it less stringent? Like, we wanted to know from a baseline perspective, did I, did I miss that in the packet?
No, so we provided, I mean, you do have the red and blue line.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Version in your packet. So, the blue text change were the changes that were made by staff. The red text changes were the changes that were made by legal counsel.
Okay.
So, we had tried to explain that in the, in the email that went out with it. We don't have the date of each change, I guess we could, we could give you the version that you saw last year, and you could see the differences.
Okay.
If that's something you want, but the, the red text and the purple text changes
Okay.
Were the changes that were made by our legal counsel.
Okay, no, that's reasonable. What about the ask about kind of where it lays with other municipalities, right? So, with some of these suggestions, like, are we more stringent, are we, you know, in parity with, you know, kind of state policies and procedures?
Yeah, I understood it to be, you wanted to be able to tell where something is a requirement of state law or ordinance, or more stringent than state law or ordinance. We're prepared to go through those, if there's one that I can't answer, then I can get you an answer, but we're prepared to go through those and answer that for any section that you, you want.
Yeah, and yes, like, we can definitely do that, I just thought, like, in the interest of time, that this was asked last month, that we would have had it available for us to review and digest, and then come to the meeting, prepared to have a conversation about, okay, this is more stringent, okay, how to, what are planning board's thoughts and opinions about this? And then we can have, so now, you're telling us this now, and then, so not, to be so cliche, but on the fly, now we have to digest it, does that make sense?
So, you want it written?
Line by line by line?
You want it written, kind of line by line, on how it compares to state law for each?
I mean, I'll, I'll open it up to the board and see what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I think it's something that I had asked for, was certainly curious about, more so in just kind of understanding a, of the, certainly of the red lines, you know, are those things that we, where legal is saying that we need to include them in order to be in line with state law? Or are they changes that they're recommending, which actually puts us more stringent than state law?
And then why, and why?
You know, and then, right, and then why? There's also on page six of the red and blue document, purple? No, obviously red and blue, anyhow, but what is the purpose of the purple, whereas you said that red was legal and blue was staff? Mine has purple on page six halfway through, for opening remarks. Is that just a printer showing purple?
Yeah, I don't know why those are showing as purple. I think it's that there was a formatting change on top of a text change, but I, I'm not 100% sure. If there's something substantive about that section, we can talk through it.
I think one of, so, with some of the recommended changes, what happened is that we had some of the changes recommended in pencil and staff between like two different staff were editing them, so it's likely that the, I think the purple changes were just from two different computers, but still on staff.
Yeah, I mean, I'll see what, how does the board feel?
And I want to add to that, we, we discussed this, I know that you, the board had some apprehension about reading the whole opening remarks, that clause of having the chair have to read the whole set of opening remarks each time. One suggestion, so we can still have the transparency, is we could say the chair or their designee and staff could do it as an option.
To read, the staff to read it each and every time?
Yeah, we could do that.
While, while we're on that topic, there, there are a couple of things in the opening remarks that I didn't catch last time, and bottom of the first page, it's asked that, you know, we suggest that people stay and not leave until the board has taken a second vote and adopted the findings. Is, I don't recall doing that process currently.
No.
We don't have a second vote in adopting findings, so can someone explain?
And if we don't adopt it, they camp out here and tell we do?
I, I guess. The, the top of this backside, it says after the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsiderations by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So do we actually, as a board, have the ability to reconsider something that we voted on the previous session, and if we decide we want to take it back up for a change? I didn't think we could do that either.
Yeah, I think the first part, first part of the question about the second vote, Sally is suggesting that we do that, we haven't always done that as a separate action, but they're suggesting that you do adopt a set of findings separate from the vote, that there's two, two votes.
Yeah, and so that's gonna be part of my question, like, so, it's never been done, right? And this is her suggestion, so I want to know why, you know what I mean? Like, and not just a verbal why, like, I, I want to know why she's recommending this, like, is that what every other municipality, our size is doing, and we're just becoming in line with that? Or is this above and beyond what other municipalities are doing? Like, you know, we're all here out of, you know, the goodness of our hearts that we want, you know, to be here for the city, so to put, you know, extra kind of regulations around us on, on how we try and make some decisions, it feels a little handcuffed. So, you know, I think we're trying to do our best, and I want to know kind of where this came from.
Yeah, so we, we have traditionally done it as a single vote, where we give you a draft set of findings, and then if you want to tweak those, you can tweak those, or, you know, decide however the board decides. We have traditionally done that as a single vote to adopt the findings and to approve the project. What's being suggested is that they should be two separate actions.
But why?
Based on, you know, it's, it's not written in stone that it has to be that way, but it's more defensible if there's an appeal.
So what's the scenario where, I don't know, that, that provides, to me, an opportunity where we could vote in agreement on the plan, but not in agreement with the findings, and then where are we?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you vote that the project, that you find that the project meets every standard, then I don't see a reason why you would vote not to approve the project, but I guess that could happen.
Well, I guess if, if we're all in agreement, and based on the findings, and we decide to move forward with the project, I don't see the benefit in having a second vote if we've all agreed the first round in order to approve the project. So I guess I, it seems redundant to me and not needed, and I think that's just why we're wondering, what's the purpose?
What do you guys think? Like, what does the board think? Everyone else think about this?
The, the risk, I think, exists when, if you look at a list of seven findings, say, as an example, there might be a different mix of board membership that, you could, you could take a vote on all the findings as a group, and somebody voting against the project might be of the opinion that different sets of those findings are the problem. So you might be voting no because you're concerned about the traffic finding. Bob might be voting no because he's concerned about the lighting. But if you go through and you vote on every finding, the project gets approved if all of the findings are met, and there could be different, different support or opposition based on each finding.
To answer your question, Stacy, I don't like change, but change is also good. I am very gray on this, because I see valid points to our status quo, and I see valid points to legal's point of view and what staff is sharing. So from my, where I stand on this is, has Auburn's planning board been in the minority when it comes to operationally how planning board meetings run and vote relative to other municipalities? And if we are in the minority, then this is probably something we should consider.
I agree with you, but I don't, but I've heard that from them.
But I don't know, and that, and that's where I say, that's where I'm gray. I, I don't, I'm not saying this does not have its merits, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying I'm old enough and wise enough to know that, you know, sometimes change is necessary and change is good.
Yep.
And I'm not opposed to that, I'm just gray as to the impetus behind it.
Agree.
The, the impetus is really that it's best practice, in the opinion of the attorney. We could look at a few different municipalities and try to gauge how many do it a different way, but I think if you have, in the example, seven sets of findings, and you end up with a three to four vote, one person might be voting against that seven set of findings because they're concerned about traffic, one might be voting because they're concerned about lighting.
I think we got that right.
But if you, if you had seven votes, you might have only one board member voting against a given finding, instead of three voting against the whole group for different reasons.
I guess I have a question, talking about the findings, are we voting on each one of those findings separately, or as a group, as a second vote?
It's being recommended that they're voted on individually.
Individually?
Yeah.
Eric, has there been an issue or findings against the city in the past that, where this particular process, if in place, would have changed an outcome, or impacted some type of legal due course? I'm just curious as to, you know, if we, if we haven't, if this hasn't been an issue before, I guess to me it's another issue, question on the gray area.
I, I think it has been an issue for some appeals within the state, I don't think it's been an issue for appeals within the city, city of Auburn decisions. I can only recall two, two appeals in the 18 years that I've been here, and the city prevailed on both of those.
Does, does staff support these changes to the policies and procedures?
Yeah, we're, we're following the advice of our city attorney, and we, we do believe that it is safer to do it that way. It's not convenient, it's not, you know, expeditious, I guess it could make a meeting take a little bit longer, but it's safer legally to defend a decision of the board if we vote on them individually and separate from the approval.
So, it's my opinion, if, if staff's in support of it, and like I said, we're volunteers, but legal does this for a job, and they're supporting it, then I don't know why we're spending as much time as we are on it, I think we got a lot of stuff in this meeting, so.
And we have been asked in the past to be a little bit more explicit with the findings, if, if we're voting for or against something, and I, I, that hasn't really been done every time. It's come out in discussions, but not necessarily like in the motion or something like that, or, you know, so, I can see where it would need to be more explicit. Would it be okay to do it within the motion? Like, there's these three things or something, or?
Yeah, and what legal is asking for is that you adopt the specific set of findings as, we, we've always done it within the motion, we've tried to draft findings that all of the departments review has determined that it does or doesn't meet a standard, and then unless the board disagrees with one of those and changes it, then it's done as part of the motion, but the recommendation of legal is to specifically adopt those findings separate from the approval. And that could happen after the general motion is made, but there should be a specific adoption of the findings that was the basis of your, your decision. And it does, in a sense, make it harder to not approve a project if you are voting on them individually. In the example that I, I gave with, you know, seven findings, each one of you might be voting no for a different reason, whereas that gets teased out if you're voting on individual findings.
So I just, I don't know if this is getting lost in conversation, but I, I, again, to Tim's point, to my point, I don't think we're opposed to it, I think we just want more information around it, and more information around these changes, right? Like, maybe MMA can help you guys, like, kind of just get an understanding of where we fall within other municipalities, because I, again, like, I, I don't know how else to ask the question, what is more stringent, what is in line, and, wait, I, I don't know, I don't know how else to ask that question.
Yeah, and I, we're prepared to go through it line by line if you want to, or we can, we can work with legal to write all of that up, I think it's a time-consuming, expensive effort. But if you don't want to spend the time going through it line by line to do that here, then we could, we could look at that as an alternative.
I guess two things, one, I think the idea of voting on each finding is good, I think it helps to provide a clearer picture of, of the final vote, yes or no, first. Second, you know, we're talking about how do we compare to municipalities, but I think this issue is not just statewide, it's national, I think, I assumed that this was provided by Sally Daggett, so this goes back to a conference in June 21, 24, I'm assuming, or no, I guess, but anyway, it's a national concern.
No, I agree.
And I think that we do need to move ahead, and if it takes, we need to get this done. So we, we take the time tonight and do it, because I think staff has put a lot of time into it, we've had legal, an hour presentation before us, and this is her recommendations, and she's well-respected in this area, so I think that either we, either we move it now and adopt it, we can always make changes later again, or if we feel we need to go, you know, page by page, then let's get it done.
That's, staff's recommendation is let's work through it and get it adopted. The other part of that voting on individual findings is that it gives the applicant an exact reason which finding they didn't meet to adjust their application.
I just want to ask this question to staff, so my question for you, staff, is we asked last month for this, for that to happen, we asked last month for an updated document with whether it was above, more stringent or not, so I, I guess that's my thing, I'm not sure why we didn't get it, so.
We, we provided the updated document that shows who made which changes, which was part of that question. We considered going and having somebody draft a line by line on what's more stringent, but I think it's more efficient if there's one, if there's some that concern you, we can dig into those, or we could go line by line.
I think that's how we should approach it, is there's something that we have a concern about, like, if it's the voting on different items or something like that, we should, we should approach it item by item, but if saying, finding out something's more or less stringent, it'd be like, what, than Topsy or than Lisbon, it's like an impossible ask because there's, there'd be so many things to compare, so I don't know that, how helpful that would be versus the time spent finding out.
No, it's not, we're not comparing to other municipalities, it's like, what is the state?
I think just ask to compare it to other municipalities.
Ideally, I would like that, but like, what I'm, what I'm looking, and, and whatever, this is my opinion, if everyone else wants to move forward and adopt it, I mean, feel free, you know?
At the end of the day, I trust staff and their competency and their knowledge, it exceeds mine regarding anything in these policies and procedures. At the end of the day, I trust Sally's competency and knowledge. Like I said, I'm in a gray area because I don't understand the why, but that doesn't mean that the change isn't warranted or good or necessary, I just understand why. But if I'm being asked to, you know, and as a whole, am I comfortable with this, knowing staff's recommendations, their involvement in it, their experience, their competency, as well as Sally's, I am comfortable going forward with it. When I look through it, some of the changes are grammatical, and the other changes that are not grammatical are sensible. So, I wouldn't have a problem going forward with this change. What I said earlier still stands, I don't understand the why, but that's not necessarily part of the equation as to whether or not it should.
Can, can we go back to my, to the, to the second part of my question before we kind of move off of that, which is the ability to reconsider a previous decision that we've made? The top of the page on the backside, certainly, after the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So do we have the ability to bring back something that we decided last meeting and say, I want to bring it back up for a debate and convert, and, and potentially overturn, overturn something that we've already decided on? I didn't realize that we had that within our, yeah.
So, yeah, I believe that somebody on the prevailing side of the vote is able to do that. So, if you were on the, the, if you're on the prevailing side, you were able to bring it back for a reconsideration under Robert's rules.
Is that in the policies and procedures?
I don't know, I know it's in Robert's rules.
I, I was gonna say, I think in Robert's rules, things are up for discussion until minutes are accepted, if I remember correctly.
Is the second vote also in there? I didn't, maybe I missed it the first go-around as well. I think, I think some of the, you know, I guess to, to get back to Tim's point on the why, you know, some of this, I can read through it and go, oh, okay, but it has impact and ramifications both for us as a board, for you, as, for staff, so without understanding, you know, making sure that we've got everything aligned and we're understanding why we're being asked to make these changes, sometimes it's, it's hard, I, I like to understand the why versus just accepting on principle that
Me too.
Somebody has said, you should do it this way. I think my, my bigger concern is if we're being, if we're, if the opening remark is referencing some of these things, we should darn make sure that they're in the policies and procedures.
And just as you noted, like, this is a recommendation, you know what I mean? So, I think that's part of it too, it's, it's a, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, there, there are things in here that are not legally required to be in here.
And, but I don't know what it is, though.
And they're, they're either best practices that set us up to be able to defend a decision more, or they're just trying to make sure the public understands the process, but it doesn't have to say everything.
I wonder too if the second sentence of that paragraph on the backside, it goes on to say, if anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, it must do so within 30 days for Superior Court. If the board has an opportunity coming to the next meeting, and it, and the decision is changed, that might prevent having somebody to go to Superior Court immediately, or fire within those 30 days.
Yeah, no, I could see that, that changing, that appeal, or changing the opportunity to appeal.
Alright.
It doesn't spell it out in the policies or procedures that you can go back to revisit a vote. It does say, following parliamentary procedure, the board will decide by vote. I can confirm where that allowance comes from, but I'm quite certain it's Robert's rules that allows the prevailing side to reconsider a vote.
I, I think to me, you know, I think that that's something that's important in here, because as, you know, while, you know, I've tried to, you know, I've got the Robert's rules, you know, a couple of the different books, but, you know, they're very large, and if we have the ability to potentially bring something back like this, I think it's a big enough deal to potentially include, so that we know as we, because this is really where I start, in under, in understanding what we're supposed to be doing or not doing, and leaving something out, unless I was hunting for it, I wouldn't know. And that's to me significant, significant enough that we included it in the opening remarks.
And the, just as clarity, the opening remarks are something that can be changed outside of the policy, this is a recommended set of remarks that covers all the things, we could certainly, you know, strike that, that paragraph if that's what you wanted, but, the opening remarks are more fluid than the policy.
So what I'm, so funny, so what I'm hearing you say is that this is a recommendation, right? So within this recommendation, it's saying that we need two votes, one, one to, to adopt a second set of, to adopt the findings. Okay, so this is a recommendation, we can change this, so are you saying that we could act, again, and, and again, I actually, you know, I, I see valid merit in adopting the findings, I do, I understand that, we've all been down that road, we've all had conversations about it. To Tim's point, change isn't always easy, but I, I see it, I do, I do, I do. But then what I'm not saying is, okay, we, we can make a recommendation, so I can make, we can make a recommendation to take that out? You know what I mean, this just?
The, the opening remarks are not part of the policies and procedures, the policies and procedures suggest that the board should have a set of opening remarks, and that the chair should read them at the beginning of the meeting. The opening remarks are provided as an example, but these could absolutely be done differently. They're not adopted verbatim, word for word, as part of the policies and procedure. What Sally was suggesting is that these are the things that should be covered, so that the public understands your process and how the board operates. Because many people coming into this room for a hearing have never been to a planning board meeting, and they don't have the familiarity and training that you have and that staff has.
Yeah, I totally agree, Eric, I think, but, for me, certainly in some of the recommended language, it's referencing procedures that we don't actually have called out in our policies and procedures, so I guess I just would want to align, any recommendation that we have, I'd want to either strike from the recommendation, or make sure we include in our procedure if we're, if we're stating that that is our procedure.
Well, this would be an example, though, so if this is, this, if our procedures say should, if we're here tonight voting on adopting these policies and procedures, and it says that we should have an opening statement, I think that would allow us enough time to set up a workshop where we could maybe review the opening remarks, so that we can come up with a copy that we're all comfortable with, because this doesn't have to happen before this happens. This is just an example, this isn't something we're bound by this particular opening remarks.
Right, but, but it sounds like there are things that are in the opening remarks that we're technically allowed to do procedurally that actually aren't in our procedure, and I just want to make sure that And I just want to make sure that before, that we would adopt any of those things before.
I think that they're in the Robert's rules and in our procedures, we have a, it says somewhere, we abide by Robert's rules, which would infer that that second part, that second vote would be part of our procedures. It's just not detailed to, like the details of those thick, I know those Robert rules books too, they're big. So I think that, that being, that being, it's, it's, it's encased in that and not necessarily these policies and procedures, like directly stated in these policies and procedures. So that's why, I, I, my, my thought would be is that we approve of these procedures, but set up a workshop when we can at the next available, or the next time we have room on an agenda to go over and come up with a set of opening remarks that we end up using.
Yeah. All right, I also see here on page five, remember that the voting in quorum? It still says every member of the board who is in attendance when a question is put to vote shall vote.
And I think you had asked if it could say full member, is that?
Unless you want associates in full to all vote.
Yeah, I think between the ordinance, if you look at the planning board ordinance, it's clear. But we could make, we can make that amendment as part of an adoption if you want to put that here. You did mention that last week and we didn't, didn't add that. So every full member would be an amendment if you want to be very, very clear about that here.
When I first received the, these policies and procedures attached, who are two sheets, I think are important. And I almost saw them as being part of, that's the Rules of Order Simplified Auburn. Planning Board as well as the Robert's Rules of Order Motion Chart. And I guess having seen those attached to when I first read and maybe not attached to further revisions, I guess I would like to have those attached to our policies and procedures. I think it does outline very well in a simplified form and maybe not having us to keep Rob's rules in total before us.
Did you catch that?
Yeah, I'm not sure, which draft are you referring to that had that chart?
Well, actually, it was just a folder that I was given.
Oh, from the legal training, from Jensen Baird?
No, I think actually it was a packet that was, sorry.
Packet that was prepared when I was first, before the first meeting.
And did it come from staff?
It came from staff.
So is it the, is it the existing policies and procedures then that are in place now?
I guess I'm not sure they were attached to what I first read as being, you know, what we're going to be looking at for voting. And I kind of assumed they were kind of an appendix too.
Okay, I guess you'll have to show us what that is that was in the packet that you're referring to.
Yep.
It's a single sheet for each, it's Rules of Order Simplified Auburn Planning Board. And the second one is Robert's Rules of Order Motions Chart.
Okay. That's something that we can attach to the policies, we'll have to make sure we have the current version of it.
Yeah, and I'll say this too, like, we have had these policies and procedures on our, on our agenda for a long time, but we kept on bumping them, right? Because we've had some really heavy agendas, a lot of public comment. So I feel like this is some of the, kind of the first real conversations we've had about this in a year, easily, right? Like, so I come from a world, like, you know, I don't want to push something through without, you know, having a pretty complete product. And I do feel like the last conversation we had, that, you know, we didn't get some of the, the forward motion. And I'm, I still don't feel like we've, I'm in a, I'm in a passive place with this. I mean, I, I absolutely respect staff and Sally for sure. And, but I also realize that a lot of this is recommendation. And, and it's not just what we do, it's our legacy of what we provide for the next planning board, you know, decades down the road. So just my, my personal opinion that I think from a product standpoint, we try and put something together as clean as possible. But I don't know, just my thought.
So for me, I've, I've got like four things, I guess, like the, the full member. Verifying the recommendation that if, if indeed council is recommending, is suggesting that we do a second vote and adopt findings individually, that, that, that is a formal, a formal part of the procedure document, if indeed that's, I mean, since, since this is really what legal is suggesting we adopt, if that's something they are suggesting we adopt, then I think we should make sure to, to have it. Certainly also the reconsideration of the board on the backside, whatever that really, because if, if it's finite, you know, can it be only if you've, if you're on the approving side or the disapproving side, or could it be anybody? Does it have to be before we actually adopt the meeting minutes? You know, I guess we're a little bit more there. And then to Bob's point with regard to, you know, some of that clarifying information, just sort of having that available. I think, I, at which point in time, I think I would, I would have enough to say, okay, we're good. Or at least I'm good.
And by, by clarifying information that Bob mentioned, you mean those two summary sheets for Robert's rules and motions?
Yeah, I've never seen them, so I'm not sure what they are. I mean, I see them now, but.
Any other thoughts?
I'd rather get this done sooner rather than later.
I mean, are, is everyone ready for a vote? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the policies and procedures as they stand? So one, two.
A motion?
You know, this is, this is kind of where I get a little like, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's been extremely fluid, a lot, you know, a lot of these, this is, this is an administrative task that we're doing right now. So it's, I feel like it could go either way, but you know what, let's do it, um, let's do it, let's do a motion. Okay, at this point in time, I'll seek a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the updated planning board policies and procedures.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
You haven't even, you haven't counted the vote yet, so I think we could.
Yeah, sure, do you have an amendment to the motion?
Well, I think the only thing that was missing, I would add the two attachments that were spoken with respect to Robert rules and I forgot what the name of the other one was.
Adding them into the policies and procedures?
As attachments, yes.
So the Robert's rule summary and the summary of simplified motions that was included in your packet.
Yes.
So we have an amendment to the motion to add those two items, all those in favor? All right, I should do it, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, excellent, motion does carry. I have an amendment to the motion. I would like to see in writing what is parity with the state and what is above and beyond instringent. I would like to see the updates that we asked last month and also this month made to the policies and procedures. And I would suggest, I have, yeah. So, do you have a second?
Second.
Any debate or all those in favor?
Did that include your amendment of full member?
Yeah, I wanted to circle back on those three things that I identified. Are you identifying those in your amendment?
Mm-hmm, are you getting all of the staff?
So you're, what you had was the full member.
Oh, no, it was, go ahead.
Well, it was the full member, it was also the two pieces, the front and back with regard to the
Reconsidering.
The opening remarks and if those are things that legal is actually suggesting that we incorporate as procedure, that they, that they're included in our procedures.
In the procedures, yeah, and we're not adopting the opening remarks per se as part of what you're doing right now, but we'll seek that clarification and we could have it worked into the policies.
What I'm going to say is this is getting a little messy. And if we're getting this messy, do we really feel like we're at a point where we can adopt these? But that's just my opinion.
That's why I voted no.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I would be more comfortable waiting, I would be more comfortable waiting one more meeting in order to have those things addressed and incorporated so that we can do a final read.
So staff, I'm asking for insight, can I rescind my amendment to the motion?
It hasn't been voted on, right?
Correct.
So I would say that you just asked the board to vote it down.
Okay, vote, board, can you vote my amendment down, please? All those in favor? I appreciate it.
Vote it down.
No, 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 this
In favor or voted down?
We are confused, exactly, because
You put an amendment which would, favorable vote would move that amendment ahead.
We didn't vote on it, so I just asked staff if I could rescind it and they said I could.
But you asked for people who are in favor of it.
So we have to keep our hands down.
We have to keep our hands down so we're not in favor.
What I, what I was suggesting that I think the cleanest way is, is to vote that amendment down if you want to kill it.
Okay. All those in favor of my amendment to the motion? Motion fails.
So now we have the motion.
His, he's carried and now we're back to yours. So.
I would
So now, now we just have him, his motion to move forward with adopting the policies and procedures with the amendment. And we had a first, we had a second, I guess, any discussion, if not, then I'm going to call for a vote.
Just for clarification, the amendment was to add those two sheets related to Robert's rules that were included in the new member packet.
So do we vote on his to then allow for?
We already voted on his, Bob's is done.
Okay, so how, so with regard to the three that I would like, I like, I guess I'd like to make an amendment then, since it didn't sound like those were incorporated in the first place. From Riley's original, which was just adopting it as it was. So I would like to make a motion to incorporate the full member, the reference to full, as well as any appropriate procedural updates in support of the suggested recommended language at the opening of, at the bottom of opening remarks and the top of the backside.
Do you have a second? Do you have any discussion of the motion? All right, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Now we're back to Riley's original motion to adopt the policies and procedures with the two amendments that have already been passed. All right, so all those in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing text amendment and I will hand it over to staff.
So the, these next two items are separate decisions. One of them is a map amendment, one is a text amendment. The first one before you is the text amendment, but they are related. The first one, the text amendment, the basis of them together is we have an opportunity to take part in a state program that promotes manufacturing with Maine derived technologies through the University of Maine system and Maine derived fiber products from the woods or agricultural products. What we found is that there is interest in Auburn for that. We already allow all of these uses in the industrial zone, but we have some small areas of general business zone that are sort of interspersed with the industrial zone out near the turnpike and along Washington Street. We were working with Economic Development about this and sort of the, the combination of expanding the uses in a defined area, this technology hub that we'll talk about next, in the general business portions of it. And if you look at the map here, the dark gray boundary is the technology hub boundary. It includes mostly industrial land, but it includes a couple of smaller areas of general business land. This change would add heavier manufacturing using Maine based fiber products to the general business zone if it's also located within this tech hub. So the idea is that while that manufacturing may not be appropriate throughout the city's entire general business zone, like the mall area, this area is being suggested as allowing for this exact tax manufacturing, compounding or assembly of articles using Maine derived forest products, agricultural products or other natural resource inputs, with the condition that it's also located in this tech hub. So it's a very defined area of the city where this expanded use would be, would be allowed. It does two things, it creates a little bit of flexibility in those areas of general business that are also in the tech hub. But it also kind of clearly states a policy of the city to try to promote this type of natural resource based manufacturing in Maine. We do have Jay Brunchik here from Economic Development as well tonight to talk about it if you want to hear from that perspective.
All right, so board, does anyone want to hear?
I do.
Okay, any questions for the board before we bring them up? Okay, seeing none?
Thank you. My name's Jay Brunchik, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the City of Auburn. Last year, the State of Maine got a tech hub designation for the entire state when it comes to bioforest and plant based products. The years, there are tech hubs being set up around the country in various states. The reason Maine got chosen for a tech hub for bioforest products is because the University of Maine has very strong programs, research and development into composites as well as bioforest products. There's a big push to, many times your composites are made out of petroleum based products, which is not great for the environment, especially if they burn. But the plant based composites are very earth friendly and are much better for the ozone and our environment, they, they don't have an effect. So there's a big push to move towards these technologies. The next step in the process that the State of Maine is going through is they've applied, February 29th was their application deadline, to be, to get the next round of funding, which would be for the strategic planning portion for these tech hubs. And then the third process would be the application for dollars, for incentives and those types of things. What we're trying to do is position the City of Auburn so that this fall, when it's time for us to meet with the University of Maine, the RU Institute, Maine Technology Institute, all of them, is to be able to say, look, Auburn already does have a tech hub that's in line with the tech hub at the state level. We also plan on putting incentives around this, this tech hub as well as programming. Currently, we already have programming. What I mean by programming is we regularly, on a monthly basis, bring the University of Maine advanced structures, folks down to Auburn to have monthly meetings with our manufacturers. And we, like tomorrow morning, not tomorrow, next, next week, we've got the RU Institute coming. So we've got the right week, we've got the RU Institute coming. So we've got the right programs in place now to consider ourselves a tech hub. Uh, this text amendment will allow for these processes to be able to happen, um, and then we'll be working with Business and Community Development where we'd essentially use the, the, um, the TIF program, uh, for, um, for incentives. Uh, already, just the fact that we're discussing, uh, creating a tech hub has created a lot of interest, um, all the way from the governor's office to the university and those places. Having a tech hub won't guarantee that we're going to get these companies, uh, in Auburn. It, it, but without having the tech hub, it could guarantee that we won't get them. So, um, we do have a prospect we're working with right now that, um, is interested in the Auburn Commerce Center, uh, which is located in general business. Us getting the tech hub would not guarantee that we win that prospect, uh, but not having the tech hub designation would make it so they'd have to look for another location. I don't know if that all makes sense, but I'm more than willing to answer some questions.
Um, I, thank you for coming. Um, certainly, to me, sounds like a, a great opportunity for the city. Um, I'm curious as to the specific sections that were identified for the overlay. There's an industrial one that's sort of the south end of the city that is not included, and I'm just curious as to what thoughts were put behind the, those specific areas of the overlay.
Sure. So, um, you know, a real specific area we are interested in is, is where the Auburn Commerce Center is located, which is in general business. Um, the other areas that are, um, industrial, you can already do these processes there, uh, but this, this is actually in, so what you're really doing when you change the, the, make the text amendment is allowing the processes in general business just in those selected areas. You see the other area, like below the low-density, um, the green area there. We didn't need to hash mark that off because you can do those processes there anyway.
Okay, all right.
Much, much of that area is an open gravel mining operation that we don't expect will change anytime in the near future, but, um, all of the manufacturing uses, uh, that we're talking about are allowed there currently.
So, so the overlay was to get the general businesses, but even though we can do the, already in the other industrial areas, we still applied the overlay? Is, okay.
In that, really, in that area, in the existing industrial zone, the value is really a marketing potential. It's not in changing the uses, um, but it's sending a clear message that Auburn is a place where you can manufacture with these new technologies and using Maine fiber products.
And then the, the other reason why it's, um, like for the Auburn Commerce Center, uh, what would be great to be able to have this is, um, there's a movement in our, for business parks to also include, um, like a small restaurant or something that serves as sort of like the cafeteria for the whole business park. So, for example, our prospect that's interested in Auburn Commerce Center, they want to build a campus-style, uh, business park where there'd be a variety of businesses there, but there might be right in the middle of it, um, daycare and restaurant that would serve not just the park, the general public, but, but those businesses there. And so currently, you can't do that in general business, and you can't necessarily do that industrial.
Thank you for coming. I can sense your enthusiasm, and I share it as well. I have a couple of quick clarifying questions. Um, when you refer to plant-based composites, can you give me examples as to what those composites are and what markets they might serve? Uh, I also have a question going on that, if we are not awarded contracts or the business, I guess is for staff as well, would we be shooting ourselves in the foot in any way by rezoning this area?
I'll let Eric address whether we're shooting ourselves in the foot. From my perspective, no. If, if they don't come, they don't come. Um, what was the first question?
Can you give me examples of plant-based composites and the industries they'd be used in?
Sure. So, um, just about everything, to some extent, is some level of composite. So right now, we have in Auburn a company called Auburn Manufacturing. They are a textile company, and they make fire retardant materials, fire-resistant materials. Even though those are, um, those are, um, textiles, they are actually made with composites. Currently, they're made with composites that are petroleum-based, which means they would be able to move into composites that are plant-based. Uh, as a matter of fact, Auburn Manufacturing is working with the, um, Composite Center at the University of Maine to develop these. Uh, another example right here in our community is Panalam. Um, currently, in the world, if there's a bowling center, um, and it's been built in the last 10 years, the bowling lane is made of composites that come from right here in, in Auburn. Um, so it's all kinds of surfaces. This, this table that I'm at and that you're at is made of composites, the, the, uh, outer area as well as the inside. Um, composites kind of, um, encompass just about everything that is around us.
I, I was asking more, because when you began speaking, you were talking about a new, new plant-based composites and things like that, and I'm curious as to what that is, what that looks like.
Yeah, so they would look and feel like our current composites. It's just they're replacing the petroleum-based composites, if that makes sense.
And staff, if, the second part of my question, if, if nothing came to fruition, rezoning these cross-hatched areas to, uh, potentially serve this industry, getting our ducks in a row, we're not limiting future growth or stunting or shooting ourselves in the foot in any way, correct?
So that's why we looked at this overlay idea, um, because we have this little bit of general business area that's sort of sandwiched between industrial areas, and the concern was, one option was, hey, what if we changed those areas to industrial? But then you're knocking out the potential for any type of housing, um, retail businesses, and the idea was that this was a way to not only promote the idea that Auburn's open for manufacturing, but also to preserve the ability to do those other types of uses in this limited general business area. The other part of it that was talked about was, hey, what if we allowed for that manufacturing throughout the general business zone, and we were concerned that that, that widespread allowance might not be acceptable to the public. So this was a way to narrow the geographic area to this largely industrial area, but with some general business, and keep that flexibility for mixed use, um, in the event that none, none of this ever comes to fruition.
And lastly, Catherine, can you show on the map real quick, that orange line, is that the Turnpike?
Yes, I'll pull it up on the, um...
That's the rotary right there, okay. All right, I was just trying to visualize where it was as well. Thank you.
Our purely industrial zone doesn't allow for that campus type of development that includes retail, manufacturing, and potentially housing, um, in the same area. So we're trying to preserve that.
And for reference, we can see that, um, the, the need for doing the overlay instead of, um, changing the general business, um, zone generally, is you can see that there's general business further down on Washington Street. We can see it all the way up Center Street. And this Turnpike area really offers a unique kind of environment.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes. Um, so you said we have the education base in Maine for this. Is that focused in Orno?
It's primarily focused in Orno, but, um, more and more of the RU Institute is working in conjunction, in partnership with Orno, um, on some of these projects.
So that, could that, some of those, like the coursework or even cooperative work move to like the Auburn campus or something, or?
Um, I would love, in my perfect world, we'd actually have, uh, you know, a combined campus right here in Auburn, but, but I think what was more likely to happen is that our existing companies will be able to start using these, these new technologies and will attract new companies that want to use these existing.
Push that, because that's gonna get the businesses here too. You have the education base, you got, and keep our young people here.
Yeah. Yeah, and what we've really been doing is, um, really stressing, it's a, uh, on a monthly basis, we bring in, um, Maine Technology Institute, the RU Institute, all these different ones to, to meet with our actual manufacturers in a, kind of like a classroom setting to explain what they do, and then from that meeting, the companies can schedule an individual meeting to, to come look at their plant and see how they can integrate these technologies.
And I, I, I think Tim was getting at this, but what, like, specific natural resources would they be using?
Primarily bioforest products, so, um...
We have a little bit of that.
Yeah, the, currently, the, the cellulose that they use is a petroleum base, but plants have a cellulose, and in the past, the, the challenge has been the cellulose has broken down too easily, uh, but, um, we've been very fortunate, and we have a Dr. Habib at the University of Maine who's really made some real breakthroughs, which has led to this Composite Center, the Composite Lab. As a matter of fact, the University of Maine has the largest 3D printer in the world. They've used these composites to make, um, boats for the US Navy with this 3D printer out of these plant-based composites.
Okay, so that's gonna draw students from away, away as well, which is gonna bring more...
And it, it really could be wood fibers in all kinds of forms. It could be down to the size of sawdust being compressed into a product or smaller, or it could be strands or, um, boards that are connected, laminated together. It could be all, all sorts of uses of Maine timber products in the manufacturing.
Yeah, very specifically, the State of Maine, while we lead in this kind of research, we don't have a single company in the State of Maine that makes cross-laminated timbers, uh, and that's something that's real basic, um, but they're hugely made, um, very big industry in the Pacific Northwest, just not here. And so it's some of those companies that are starting to take a look at the State of Maine, uh, because even if they want to, it wouldn't be that they would move. It's just, you can imagine if you're making, uh, wood products for construction, um, shipping them from Oregon is a little difficult, but if you have an east, east coast base. Um, so there's the huge potential for that as well.
I guess I just have one question, somewhat of a concern, and it's not the, the overlay, but the wordage into the general business district. I guess, you know, going down, this should fall under special exception, and it, as I believe, correct?
Yes, as a special exception, so it would have to come to Planning Board.
Yeah, so it's 24. The other thing, I, and I had to read it a few times before I realized. I looked at it, said special exception, manufactured, et cetera, et cetera. Then you find out, well, it's gotta be into the overlay zone. I guess for clarity, I'd rather see that somebody goes there and says, when in the overlay zone, this, this would be allowed. I think it's easy for somebody to look at 24 without looking at A and, uh, thinking, yes, I can do this in general business. So just to clarify right up front, that only when this general business is in the overlay zone is this use permitted?
That when we have conditions for special exception that are specific to a use, that's the format that we've traditionally used in the ordinance, but, um, they would also have to meet all the other special exception criteria in order to gain approval, but...
Hey, any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none at this. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. I would seek a motion to open up public com. Do, do you have a question? We're starting it right now. Okay, yep, yep, yep. Okay, so no other questions at this time. I would entertain, seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, opening up public comment. So, um, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Well, I just really, um, wondering about this. So if we're doing these great, and I'm not against using natural.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and your address?
Oh, Amara So, 745 West Auburn Road. Um, I'm not against using natural resources by any means, you know, versus petroleum, but, um, when you go to produce these, what is their energy source and how much pollution will they produce? I can just, I, in my mind, I have this big industry with these big stacks and all this stuff billowing out, like in the paper mills and stuff like that. I was just curious.
All right. Okay, anyone else like to come forward?
Thank you. Um, name is Scott Ricchio. I live on Hotel Road. Um, can we go back to your map?
And your addresses?
2760 Corner Hotel in Kitty Hawk.
Okay, thank you.
So can you just identify, the, the maps on here are a little hard to read, but the, the airport and stuff behind it. So is all of the purple up in this section to the left and the right of general business where we're talking about, or is there a specific area in the airport or outside of the airport? Or is it all zone, all of the purple, the dark purple and the light purple, under consideration?
If it's, okay, can I answer the question, and we can stop your time? Is, is that okay if I answer the question if we stop his time?
Sure.
Okay, great, cool. Um, so the, the darker purple here is suburban residential. Um, this part is not affected. So it's only the light purple industrial.
Okay.
And the orange, general business. But truly, the only effect that it has is in the orange, general business areas.
Okay. So I, I own and operate Northeast Charter Bus here in town, started my business in, in my backyard on Hotel Road 25 years ago. So I, I have a little bit of background transportation for transparency. Traffic is an issue in that section of town. I can't get the state to call me back to tell me why the LED stop signs, solar powered, aren't working, and they've been in since October. Um, we know a lot about that intersection. We can hear it, we see it. It needs help. It doesn't need a roundabout that they're talking about in 27, but it needs help. So I encourage you as a planning board and someone who has a major transportation background, to look into transportation, because if we're gonna do this, and I support the forest product industry, actually, you see tree-zone buses because I have a forestry degree and still practice forest management and sit on some boards, so I know a little bit about what you're doing, and it's great for Maine, it's great for Maine businesses, it's great for people in the Auburn area, but traffic has to be part of the conversation, traffic flow, what time of day, what day of the week, truck routes, things of those nature, because that area's already very busy, and it's not that I don't support it, but it, it needs help. And again, I can't get the state to call me back and talk to me after I've done a lot of homework on their behalf to try and support safety and the residents that live there, because that's who we are in that little section. And I think there's an opportunity for balance, but I think it's the Planning Board's responsibility as a resident to, to think about that, and I'm happy to help in any way that I can, as I've done with the state, with photographs and emails, things of that nature. So that's my reason for being here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Pete Creaser, and I live on 75 Charter Way. I live right in the purple area, right near the, very close, I go within the 500 feet of the orange property there. Um, I guess my concern, and I understand the economic development and that we need to bring business to, to Auburn, I understand that, um, because I think about it and what everyone said here, it seems like we already have zonings that allow that to, for people to come here. Um, my biggest fear is that we're, we're allowing a factory to be built, or factories to be built right next to where I live. And we talk about composites, right? Composites have chemicals that are, that make them up, like this has chemicals in it, right, that's gonna get released into the air with, with my kids right there, right? I live within 500 feet of that. I live within 500 feet of that. Um, and I actually jointly own with the rest of my complex right up against it. Um, so for me, I don't want my backyard polluted with a factory going 24 hours a day with pollution in the air, loud noises. I mean, that's what I, that's what I'm worried about when I see this. Um, and I like the natural too. I mean, I'm not opposed to growth and I'm not opposed to using natural products. I'm I'm fearful that it's it's the base is a natural product. It's not necessarily what it's made out of. There's lots of other chemicals that make up these composites that will be in the air right near where I live. It's gonna decrease my property value if that happens, right, along with everybody else along that strip. Um, and that will lower taxes, right, or I would presume it would lower taxes on those properties. So there may be economic growth, but there could also be detrimental factors to that. Anyway, that's, those are my concerns. Um, I'm, I I feel like, you know, I, when I came and bought my house, I wasn't buying it next to a factory, right? And it feels like I might have done that in retrospect, this changes. So that, I I guess, as I depart, um, imagine if, you know, where you live, they were gonna build a giant factory right next to it or factories on either side of it. I mean, either way, right? How would that make you guys feel? I mean, that doesn't make me feel very good. If that, it seems like that could happen and that's what I'm worried about.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I'd seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor? Okay. All right, so I heard one question. Um, one thing I will address, so, um, the issue around traffic. I'm wondering if Scott can work with staff around, because he's trying to get to so state. So I would just make the recommendation that they contact you and and obviously you guys all know this as well, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree. Uh, I was gonna say with regards to the transportation and the pollution that, um, especially the transportation would be considered, uh, so so would it would it have been something's a special exception, it means it's allowed, but it has to come before us before, it it comes before us and then goes to city council. And so the issues about, uh, traffic and pollution would depend on the specific, uh, factory or whatever being built, there would be, the questions for that would be able to be answered when we know exactly what it is. So that would be more of a business by business or situation by situation.
Yep.
Uh, that's how we'd address that or when we'd address it.
That's what I was gonna say too.
And if I could just clarify, they don't necessarily have to go to city council, but they absolutely have to be publicly noticed in a a hearing before the planning board.
Thanks. And then also the que- there was the question, uh, about what the energy source of the factories would be.
Yeah, I guess we don't know for sure in every instance. Um, I think what's made this area attractive for manufacturing is that it has ample access to natural gas, um, electrical power and the transportation in particular, um, proximity to the turnpike and rail.
Yes, prior to this, um, a lot of the manufacturers are moving toward, um, electrical, electric for their power. And, um, I've had conversations with CMP. Um, they feel confident that with their current infrastructure, they can support, uh, manufacturing in this area.
Okay, any other, that that was the only question I heard. And then I I appreciate you clarifying the piece around the traffic and the special exception. So did anyone else have any other questions that they heard?
Maybe just a question and maybe clarification. So uses are permitted. So, but if it gets to a certain size or acreage or square footage, then it be- becomes subject to, uh, public notice and hearing and so forth.
So many of the uses are permitted. Um, manufacturing is already permitted in the industrial portions of this area. Um, at less than 10,000 square feet of new building area would be permitted as a matter of right. Um, what this is proposing in the general business portions is regardless of size, it gets kicked to to planning board as a special exception. Uh, whereas the existing standard in the industrial zone would only do that if it's over 10,000 square feet.
Okay, so I think we're all, are any, so I just wanna close, are we all set with anything with the public before we start asking staff our questions? Did anyone have any other questions from public?
Well, Mr. Creaser mentioned, uh, uh, like affluent from those types of manufacturing. That would be something would we, we would have to consider if it came before us as well, correct?
Uh, yes, um, any of the potential impacts on abutting properties or the surrounding area, including traffic affluent, um, there's also, um, fairly low thresholds for manufacturing facilities that require an air emissions permit from Maine DEB. And I think that's where they would really dive into what are the, are their solvents used? What, how are they filtered out of the air before air is discharged, that kind of thing? Um, but, um, odors would be, um, under the local ordinance, odors could be prohibited um, if they're detectable at the property line, so.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, then I would seek a motion. Uh, and just so you guys know, staff, um, we've got the public hearing for text amendment. We've got the public hearing for map amendment. If you look at the suggested motions in our packet, proposal one, text amendment is the motion for this, what we're talking about now. And then we're gonna move to map amendment, which is, uh, proposal two. That makes any sense?
Sure, I'll go ahead and and make the proposal on text amendment, uh, recommendation. Um, make a motion to recommend that the city council amend chapter 60, article four, division 12, general business district by including manufacture, compounding and assembling of articles using Maine-derived forest products, agriculture products, or other natural resource inputs as a special exception use with a condition that the site must be located within the Maine Forest Bio Products Advanced Manufacturing Tech Hub Overlay District.
Do you have a second? All right, do you have any discussion of the motion? Okay, seeing none, others in favor? Okay, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the same topic, uh, just moving to the map amendment.
Yeah, we've talked a lot about it. We can go back to the map, but this would define that, um, Maine derived wood products technology overlay district. Um, we've talked a lot about to understand the impacts of the text amendment. Um, staff supports this as well and recommends a favorable, um, recommendation of the city council. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Oh, wait, so moved in six seconds. Okay, second, okay, all those in favor? All right, excellent. So if you'd like to come forward, uh, state your name, your address, and you've got five minutes.
Scott Ricchio, 2760 Hotel Road. Uh, the same concerns as before. We have two motions here, so I guess I should address them twice. Traffic, logistics, transportation, uh, noise, all of those things I think are important to to consider in some of the other comments earlier. Some of the, I mean, you may or may not recognize the wood products businesses that are near that area uh, down in Poland and just on the backside of the airport. We have trucks from Canada bringing product in. I can, I can tell you who they are. Because so it, traffic is a big concern in that area for me for safety reasons, for residents as well as for people traveling in that area. We we have to address this. Um, and I support what it is you're trying to do, but I think there are some concerns. And I wanna put that on the record if I could, please. Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to come forward?
Yeah, I already said it, but, um, noise and chemical emissions is what I'm concerned about.
Okay, perfect. And and again, just don't forget to state your name and your address, please.
Pam Russo, 745 West Auburn Road. I just think that you need to maybe move this back a little bit, because it is important for the people that do live there. It isn't, I think, a really good idea for, for example, would you like that in your backyard? And I know that's been, you know, thrown around a lot, but we are a community. And I think that sometimes you just get too close and you need to think about moving things back so that you're not affecting people who pay taxes and live here.
Okay, anyone else like to come forward and speak? Okay, seeing none, let's take a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All righty, um, so, you know, what I'll address too, and and it's, 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 oh, I always like to see new faces come from a public, uh, comment standpoint. So, um, if you've not had the luxury or the opportunity to watch other, um, planning board meetings, I can attest on all of our behalf that traffic is without a question one of the first and foremost things that we get hung up on. And that's why Eric had mentioned, um, you know, when we have a finding of fact, his first example was traffic, because we very much do, uh, get stuck on that. It's important for all of us on this board. And so just letting everyone know that. Um, but I didn't hear any other questions necessarily around it, but I'll just see if anyone else has any comments.
I'd just like to make the comment, um, to remind fellow board members and also the public that has been contributing and I thank you for that. Um, what we are discussing and voting on are proposals of changing text in a map. We are not approving a business located at X that uses these chemicals and does Y and Z. This is simply opening up the opportunity for businesses to come in. And if they should, they still need to follow the proper channels, come before the planning board, meet all state and local and regu- guidelines and regulations for pollution and odor and traffic. That's not what we are approving right now. We're just approving the availability of the space and the verbiage to do so.
All right. Any questions for staff on this map amendment? If there are none, I'd seek a motion.
I make a motion to recommend that the city council amend the official zoning map of the city of Auburn to create the Maine Forest Bio Products Advanced Manufacturing Tech Hub Overlay District. This zoning map overlay is generally located near Lewiston Junction Road, Kitty Hawk Avenue, and the southerly half of Washington Street.
Do you have a second? Do you have any discussion of the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is a workshop. So review and give feedback on the Lake Auburn Watershed Stakeholders Group recommendation and response to city council order. Can I ask you guys a quick question? When did this come as a part of our agenda item?
Well, I did.
When?
When did it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the original order from the council, you mean?
Yeah.
It was, I mean, the order number is.
Is that the 0401, 02?
Yeah, so January.
Okay, cool.
Um, was when the council originally, uh, voted on it.
There you go. I didn't know.
And, um, yeah, we just wanted to provide an update in the current working papers on what the, um, ad hoc group has been working on. Uh, the council gave us a timeline of reporting back to them, um, by, uh, the second meeting in April, the 16th. And we wanted to make sure you know the schedule, that you've seen some of the work that's being done so far, um, in formulating a recommendation out of that committee. Um, April 16th, um, we are, uh, going back to city council with recommendations from that group on septic systems, um, the subsurface wastewater inspection program and some limitations on residential development, um, in the, in the watershed. Um, May 6th, we'll have the other component back out of that committee um, and going to city council related to agriculture and forestry, uh, type uses. And then the plan is to have a final version, um, of text ready for a public hearing, uh, to go to the May 14th planning board meeting. Um, so we're happy to take any feedback on what you have so far. Uh, and then there'll be another opportunity to hear from the public in front of the planning board um, and work on formulating a recommendation, um, in May or possibly continuing to a second meeting.
So the timeline that was actually in the city council order, it was not met. Is that correct? Given that they wanted no later, the the full process, no later than the second regular council meeting in April 2024?
Yeah, so, uh, we, I think, are on track to do that. Uh, we've just been asked to split it into two, two discussions at the council at this point. Um, so after this Thursday, I think we'll have all the information. Um, but council wanted to, um, hear, uh, the, to move on the septic and residential development piece and they'll both be lined up for the May planning board meeting.
Oh, okay, I I read this as the, they wanted through our May review meeting on the 14th, um, as as being their timeline, but, uh, I must have.
Yeah, I understood it as reporting back to them, the recommendation out of the group. And then what comes back to you will have already been vetted by the council. So we know we're working with something that they're, they don't have any specific concerns with. Or if they do, you'll know what those concerns are as part of your review.
Are we listing concerns now?
Yeah, we can take any feedback that you want us to bring back through the committee for Thursday's meeting and into the council.
My biggest concern is this is a lot of limitations placed on landowners for residential use, which is a very small percentage of the impact on the lake uh, compared to the other uses, especially listed in this, um, the report that we got. Um, to limit the amount of, because there's so many regulations or ordinances on, um, you know, the so, the size of impervious area and what you need to do with the controlling the water foot coming out of house, uh, you know, the impervious services and, uh, septic systems. That focusing on this, like prohibiting ADUs and, um, limiting the number of new units to five per year, um, it it just seems like quite an overreach. And the impacts on, uh, property values is huge when you do these things. And also on the tax base and Auburn is really suffering a huge burden of that cost. And other communities don't have to suffer that.
I'd like to add to what Paul just said regarding the, uh, financial burden on Auburn taxpayers that already exist. I see that on the bottom of the first page of the order, there's a consideration for mending the described inspection method, um, for wastewater to shift responsibility of the inspection to the landowner and provide a phased implementation. Am I reading that correctly? Because I remember that meeting and I can see further where where it had originally been discussed that, um, the city would be doing that every five years or upon sale. So now there's a consideration to change that to telling the property owners, you need to pay for this inspection this often and put another burden on them. And did I read that correctly?
You, you read that correctly. Um, I know in the earlier discussions last year, we had started with that being either law pack or a city responsibility. Um, the council's order specifically asked for this group, um, and staff to weigh in on shifting this back to the landowner and providing a phased approach. One of the fears was you, if you have everybody do their inspection in the first year, then everybody's due the same time next year and it would be difficult to hire somebody to do that many inspections in one year in this market. Um, so the idea of a phased approach was to prioritize the ones that were, um, potentially most impactful to the lake, but also to spread those inspections over multiple years. But it does shift the cost to the the homeowner. That's accurate.
Uh, I I have no issues with the phased concept, but I mean, I I remember a lot of the early conversations that I thought law pack said that they were willing and had an interest in actually, you know, doing those and would be willing to do that in conjunction. And I thought that was some of that conversation today. Was that?
Yeah, and I think the reason why we did that was because how, where do we have the checks and balances? So is it an honor system, right? So if we put the responsibility of the inspection to the landowner, then then it's just an honor system?
Yeah, so there would be a significant education piece on the front end to encourage people to have their systems inspected, um, but then there would have to be a written directive to have it done in a defined period of time based on the ordinance.
But to go back to my question, is, is it an honor system, like?
No, no.
Then, then who's going to follow up the landowners to ensure it happens?
So if it's not LPEC, and I believe that LPEC's focus on doing that inspection has changed, um, since the watershed report from, uh, the most recent one that they received minimized the, um, impact that septic systems have on water quality in Lake Auburn, that they are not a significant contributor, um, to phosphorus and nutrient loading in the lake. Um, so I think they're reconsidering whether or not they want to invest in that, that inspection program.
Okay, so if LPEC is reconsidering the inspection program, and this language says it's put on the landowner, then it's an honor system?
No, so there would be a significant education piece that I, I mentioned, so we would have to provide outreach to property owners explaining the new requirement and the timelines to have their system inspected. And then at the end of that period, the violation would be not filing the inspection report, and the city could, um, go to that property owner and use land use laws to, to enforce that.
Wow.
I don't think that, um, that if we don't get a good rate of compliance, that we have the staff capacity to do that in year one, um, but we could propose it in a future year, if the council wanted that.
So since LPEC can't make money off of it, it turns into, you do this, and if you don't do this, we're going to make you do it. And if, then, then what's next, liens, or?
I know, right?
This turns into Big Brother messy real fast.
I don't, I don't know that it was because they can't make money off it, I think it's because they determined it wasn't the primary source of the, of the pollution, so it's no longer a priority for them. So they'd rather spend their money somewhere else, it's not, it's not like a...
There is...
I, I, I agree with that, Riley, so if it's not a primary source of pollution, why is it even a topic?
Because it's still, it still would be pollution, and you don't want old septic systems, you still want someone to update their septic system and keep it up to date. And so since it's not a point source, or it's not a high priority point source, then we don't have to use resources of ours, we can push it onto the homeowners to keep up on their own.
I've, I have a quick question, does the city have a rough estimate as to how many residents would be affected by this if it were to pass? Are we talking a dozen homes? Are we talking three dozen homes?
Right around three twenty-five, so we have about two hundred and seventy-five systems that were built to the thirty-six inch standard that we've had for years until the recent change, and then, um, sorry, two hundred and seventy-five that were built to a grandfathered standard, and about fifty that were built to the thirty-six inch standard, for a total of about three twenty-five.
Thank you.
This is weighing on me a lot, I, uh, that's a huge financial burden if somebody needs to replace their system. And I, I recognize the responsibility of it, but at the same time, no one's checking mine, because I'm not in the watershed until I move, and even then, it's not even required.
Yeah, we, we are looking at sources of funding that could help people with replacements if they're identified, but it is, it is a big burden. Um, and I think the watershed report, um, has noted that properly functioning septic systems are not a major contributor, but a failure, you know, near a stream or near the lake can be a major contributor, and not always nutrients, but pathogens and bacteria. Um, so, we don't have good base information for how systems are functioning, especially some of the older ones that we don't have designs for. Uh, we have no way of knowing what's actually there for a system, but this would develop that, that base information over a five-year period.
Yeah, I'd have a hard time supporting uh, enforcement of this without some type of a funding source beforehand that a, also the other communities are sharing in as well, because they have just as much of a vested right in, not right, but interest.
I don't think we can enforce it on them, that's part of the problem with this whole package, it's the up, the up watershed stuff is not, we're not able to enforce much in that.
Well, if they want a good faith from the residents of Auburn, then they need to jump in and join the party.
They, well, they also don't take water out of Lake Auburn, so they don't have, they're not as much a stakeholder, so it doesn't impact them as much either.
Question, the services for pumping and so forth, would they be partly, uh, ones that could inspect as well? Or does it take somebody beyond just coming and opening the tank and, and pumping?
Yeah, many of the people pumping tanks have the basic ma- state of Maine certification for doing the inspection, where they look at the baffles and ensure the tank's in good condition. Um, so it, it can be done as part of the pumping, there's even been talk about if we were able to acquire a grant or funding, is there a way to incentivize the, um, homeowner by helping to cover the cost of pumping your system, and, you know, the five years isn't magic, but it also is an educational reminder to people that they have a septic system, that it needs to be maintained, that it needs to be pumped periodically. Uh, but yes, most of the pumping services could do the inspection while they're pumping.
Because we have to recognize that on a monthly or quarterly basis now, the people that are on public water, public sewer, you're automatically paying, uh, on a quarterly basis for your sewer, sewage. It's all based upon water consumption. So the people that are around, you know, that, that have a septic system, uh, they're not being assessed, uh, for water usage. So in a sense, there is a responsibility for a homeowner that has a septic system to realize there is a cost that's associated with that, that system. Because the rest of us, if we're on wa- public water and, and public sewer, we're paying for our sewage to be treated, transported and treated.
Ed, question on the, um, on the backside of, I'm not sure, a couple pages in. It talks about prohibiting ADUs, and I guess if we're talking about setting up, um, you know, inspections to make sure the septics are designed right, and we have, um, the space, I guess I'm, I'm curious, and they're not, functioning ones aren't contributing to the phosphorus growth, why are we prohibiting ADUs? What's the logic behind that?
Yeah, that, that's a, um, piece of what's being discussed out of that committee. Um, the Lake Auburn watershed is the one area in the state that we're allowed to exempt from the impacts of LD two thousand and three, um, and that's one piece that the committee has discussed, so, um, the reason is that it increases wastewater disposal, having more bedrooms, having more living space, and, um, potentially increases the footprint, but creates more runoff in the watershed.
Yeah, but if the se- if the system is working as it, as it should be, why is there an issue?
Yeah, I think the concern would be more on the way of stormwater, if you're increasing the footprint of a building. Um, but the committee is looking at that as part of their work, so. It's not, um, you know, it's not something that we necessarily recommended, but it's something that the committee is looking at as part of their work.
And there's other, like, number nine, the disturbance limits, and then, um, impervious area limits, and stuff like that, that certainly could help contain those, especially moving the setbacks closer to the road of twenty-five feet, you're getting rid of twenty-five feet by twelve or something of impervious surface on newer construction, obviously, but...
Yep, that's the purpose of that, that reduction.
So...
So, so is that designed to bring the, the building property forward, then? The building envelope forward by dropping it from twenty, from fifty to twenty-five to try to get it? So there's more buffer? Is that...
Shorter driveway, less impervious area.
Yep.
And depending on which side of the road it is, I guess it would be further or closer to the lake, but the intention is to not require a fifty-foot driveway, um, to only require that twenty-five-foot setback instead of fifty. Uh, right now, we're essentially forcing somebody to build their house fifty feet back in that zone, and that's seen as counterproductive if you're trying to reduce impervious area.
Is, are some of those recommendations from the original FB Environmental Group, uh, recommendation about construction in the watershed?
Um, the low impact, the, the fifteen thousand square foot, um, disturbance and the seventy-five hundred square foot are from the low-impact development standards that FB recommended. Um, and these aren't, these aren't the final answer either, this is an update of where the committee has been uh, on this, and we're hoping to finalize everything for this week, um, with them, but, uh, yeah, some of these are from, from that report.
Can you clarify item twelve, general housekeeping?
I, I think, um, there were references to the Lake Auburn watershed, um, in the ordinance. Um, those were updated to be consistent to reference the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district rather than just the Lake Auburn watershed. Um, chapter two forty-one, the subsurface wastewater rules, um, there was some terminology that wasn't exactly consistent word for word in our ordinance. Um, I can't think of an, an, an example word, but I can, we can make sure those are identified in the track changes versions. Um, and then there was...
I, I didn't know if that meant general housekeeping edits regarding the verbiage and the language of the documents, or if it meant general housekeeping as in the tangible way a property is kept within the, like, you, you can't have derelict cars in the front yard, I mean, I didn't know how to, how to process that statement.
Yeah, it's, it's cleaning up text language where there was any inconsistencies or clarifications that weren't really changing the substance, but they were making it consistent and clear.
Are the, are the workshops that are, that are ongoing, are those, uh, publicized as well as open to the public and with, with minutes? Any agendas, do you know?
Yeah, yeah, they are, so they've been, um, over the last, we've had like four scheduled meetings over the last several weeks. Um, I could find the dates, but the next one, um, coming up will be this Thursday, it was rescheduled from last Thursday because of the storm. Um, we're planning on having it this Thursday at four o'clock, so anyone is welcome to come.
Where will that be, this Thursday?
Um, we are going to have it in the community room, the, the community room though is booked starting at five, so if we need to have more time and move it to the council chambers, once that room is taken, then we will move it here, but we're hoping to have it done within an hour and just go by point by point, um, and really tease out any, any, um, uh, anything that we, that the group doesn't agree on, to make it so it's really solid.
Alright, staff, do you have what you need?
Yes, yeah, we wanted to make sure you were still in the loop and we heard any feedback, um, but you will certainly have another chance to hear from the public and, um, review this at a later meeting. And as Catherine said, you're welcome to attend Thursday, um, if you're interested.
Yeah, for me personally, with those twelve points, I'd love to see number three and eight struck from those points.
On which one? There's a focus group one and a...
On focus group two, the twelve points, item three and item eight.
Okay.
Yeah, so I...
What is the outlined technical guidance on forms to be used in the septic inspections, like, like forms as in, like, physical forms, or like, paper document forms?
Paper document, so there's a, a standard inspection checklist that they want to develop as part of that, and the state of Maine has one, but I think there would be some differences between that and the one that would be standardized in Auburn.
So more stringent?
Um, I don't think it would be more stringent.
If we already have something from the state of Maine, why would we?
Yeah, I, we can, we can definitely show you exactly what the differences are, um, when we come back. Um, I don't think it was more stringent as much as it was just slightly different than what the state form was, um, but I can get you that information. I think it's our ordinance that's much more stringent, um, but the form is pretty standard.
Maybe a question to staff, the two focus groups, how many have been coming to those meetings? Is a, is it a designated group or whoever's interested, or is there a actual, is it ad hoc committee assigned to each task?
Yeah, so it was, um, so the group is called the Lake Auburn Stakeholders Group, and it's a group of kind of appointed individuals, um, including, oh, gosh, we have members of the Sustainability Natural Resource Group, um, we have members of, um, kind of a, a citizen organized Lake Auburn Interest Group. Um, and so there are some appointed members, but they are open to the public, and, um, oh, members of LPEC, um, uh, Auburn Water and Sewer District. Um, let's see. And within that, focus groups one and two, that was, um, divided pretty evenly just amongst the appointed members who are there, so that way we have a smaller group. Um, in the fo- in the focus group one, there's like four individuals. Focus group two, there's, I think, six, um, five or six, so they're kind of even, the focus group two has a few more people. Um, but they've been meeting pretty regularly, and typically what happens is we come together in a room, review the tasks, and then go through the ordinance, people will raise questions, there will be some debate, people will come back with more information, and so the language so far is just being teased out through that process.
So I guess to, to build on that, are there any, um, homeowners or, or people from, that actually live in that area currently? Because it sounds like there's such a very low number to begin with, that it could be, these recommendations could be very biased based on those people who decided they wanted to step forward. Um, and that's a concern of mine when I start reading down these things to understand the mindset and the why, to go back to where we started at the beginning of the meeting, um, in order to make sure that I'm comfortable with any suggestion that is brought forward. You know, is it four people thought that it was a great idea and therefore it got pushed through, or does it, is it based on science? Is it based on policy? Is it based on some formal federal or local regulation? Like, those are the things that I would be interested in knowing about, but if it's someone's opinion and bias, then I'm not.
I have standing points, Dave, I couldn't agree more.
Couldn't I agree more?
Thanks, Dave.
Did you, did you guys get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I can, uh, off the top of my head, I can only say for sure there's one resident of the watershed, for sure, I don't know if anybody else actually lives in the watershed. Um, but they do own property, at least one other owns property in the watershed.
But I will say, yeah, I, I think you're right, I can't think of, um, how many people specifically live in the watershed, but I know we have, um, we do have the benefit of having some, of having subject matter experts, um, we have i- in various areas, like we have, um, uh, we have a farmer, we have a, a forester, um, a chair of LPEC, so we do have that, but I hear your concern too, for sure.
Okay, any other questions before we move on?
So we've identified, you know, people actually ad hoc, do you have, uh, members of the public listening in to some of these sessions, or has it been primarily just the, uh, ad hoc, and then the subgroups for each task?
It's been primarily the, the ad hoc group, yep, so... So while they've, while the members of the public are welcome to join in, they're on the calendar. It's, it, the, the group that showed up has been the, the ad hoc group who have taken an interest and kind of stepped forward.
Okay. All right, ready to move on to the next workshop item? Okay, next workshop item is a brief on the city's accomplishments and progress related to the 2010 comprehensive plan.
All right, so, um, I'm hoping that we're gonna, we're gonna have more on this soon, but, but the comprehensive plan is a pretty, is a, is a pretty com, I mean, it's a comprehensive document. It, it covers all parts of the city and what in the direction the city is hoping to go in in the next ten years. Um, last time we did an update, um, was, or last time we've done kind of a progress report was in two thousand and eighteen. So our last full comprehensive plan review was in, uh, or rewrite was in two thousand and ten. We did an update in two thousand and twenty-one. And since then, we have not really gone through and done a progress report of what the city has done, where we are on that, um, trajectory, and what we still have to do. So what we have today is a, a kind of a roll-up of, um, uh, to review what we've done, to look at maybe what we still have to do according to the current comprehensive plan. And also to think about, to use this to really to start to think about what the planning board wants to do moving forward. In the next year, we're thinking about, um, starting to do a new comprehensive plan rewrite because, um, every ten years or so, that has to happen. And, um, ten years goes by really quickly, turns out. So, um, really, this is a chance for us to, to look at the whole picture and just think about what you're, what stands out as, um, priorities moving forward. So what we did here is we broke out the different aspects of the comprehensive plan into the subject matters as they relate to planning. So, Lake Auburn was one big part of the comprehensive plan. So some goals in the plan included to update Lake Auburn, uh, the overlay district requirements, um, manage pollution from new development, establish phosphorus control ordinance, um, protect and monitor water quality, uh, redesign septic standards and designate responsible management entity for septic systems, um, increase erosion control, maintain agriculture and rural zoning in the watershed, and require septic inspection upon property transfer. So, um, all of these goals, um, most of the goals that have been listed in the comprehensive plan anyway are either well underway or accomplished at this point. Maybe some of them with a few tweaks left to add. So, um, I won't go through all of these because many of you remember what we've done, but some, some, um, of the progress on Lake Auburn has included, um, uh, reducing the density of housing, um, from one unit per acre to one unit for three acres in the residential zoning areas. Another area that we've, that we have improved is the septic system requirements. We're still working on that, that, uh, monitoring entity that we've identified in the last comprehensive plan. Phosphorus control ordinance was a big win, that was last year. Um, and that's been applied to the whole Lake Auburn watershed where someone needs to now show that they are treating any runoff from new development on their lots. And so what's left to do? We are, uh, there, there's, so these things are kind of ongoing, but we haven't, um, I think these are things to keep in mind moving forward with planning efforts. So, um, have monetary assistance for septic system replacement, that's something that we were talking about tonight. That's in the comprehensive plan. Control invasive species, that's an ongoing thing that we are dealing with in Maine. Maybe we could talk about what that might look like, continue land purchase and conservation. So, um, LAPEC, a, a chunk of what we do for Auburn watershed protection is to acquire land around the lake, um, to use it for buffering, for preservation. So continue that, um, continue capital improvements. We are ongoing, um, our efforts to monitor the statewide, um, watershed protection trends are ongoing. And to establish the owner resident management program. So those are, those and, and the education in that, in that aspect. So those are all things that we are discussing. Some are, we're farther, we're farther along than others, some we haven't started. So, um, that is, but I do think we've made a lot of progress there. So another priority in our comp plan is to look at our natural resources, including water, waterways, floodplains, stormwater, shoreline zoning, everything about our natural resources, wetlands, um, flooding areas in Auburn. So the goals we've met so far, um, listed in our comprehensive plan include supporting land conservation along rivers and establishing a land trail management program for the Andersgagen River. That's someone that we're actively working on, rather. Update stormwater management requirements, including phosphorus control. Um, that applies everywhere in the Lake Auburn watershed and the Taylor Pond watershed. So all water bodies in that area that would apply to. And prohibit filling and mapped floodways. So something that staff does routinely is that if anyone has a, if anyone is proposing any kind of development in a floodplain area, we require a flood hazard development permit to be turned in to prove that the building is above base flood elevation. There are lots of, um, regulations around that. The city has, um, ongoing MS four stormwater permit, um, program. So we are working, we have, um, a permitting system with our stormwater. So we're really active and on top of that. Let's see. We are working on improving and creating trail networks for recreation and for preservation along Andersgagen, the little Andersgagen rivers. And that's an ongoing, um, priority and, um, item for the next, the next quarter and the coming months as well. We still have more to do for this area, including, um, really continuing to develop those trail networks. A lot of them are kind of in the planning phase and, um, figuring out how to loop in the trails to connect them to each other to create that network. So that's ongoing. Restoring fish passageways. There, there are several, um, significant parts of, uh, of the rivers that we can really work to improve, including some dam removal. There is opportunity for funding for, for improving fish passageways in that way. So we are working on that. Taylor Pond, we have made significant progress, um, on the protection of Taylor Pond, including, um, phosphorus control plans, as we know, that was adopted just in the last two years. We have shoreline zoning applying all throughout Taylor Pond. LID standards for changes to existing development and new development. There are quite, there are several restrictions in Taylor Pond that limit, um, the, the amount that somebody can, uh, can grow their structure if it's non-conforming, which are frankly most along the Taylor Pond watershed or along the Taylor Pond, sorry, uh, shoreline zone area. And many of the improvements made also require, um, putting buffers in, increasing the vegetation in that area. Planning also, under the purview of planning, is historic and archaeological preservation. We haven't discussed that very much, at least in the time that I've been here. But that's something that we could think about moving forward. There is work to be done, um, including a lot of it is information and education about Auburn's historic, um, historic sites and buildings. Um, create site standard, site design standards for nonhistoric buildings. Update archaeological resource standards and submission requirements and develop an archaeological resource list. Identify, survey, map, um, significant historical and archaeological resources. One thing that we did do in the last few years to contribute to this goal is, um, adopt the provision in every zone that says we can, um, that, that allows adaptive reuse of structures of community significance. We haven't, um, we have not reviewed a project in the time I've been here under that standard, but that is an option to, to make creative use of a building of, that has historical significance in any zone in the city. So that's, that's a really, um, that's a really good option for us moving forward if, if we have something like that that comes up. We've made significant progress in housing and community development, significantly, um, uh, applying form-based code to much of the city. We have also adopted the, um, the accessory dwelling, um, accessory dwelling unit provision to allow for a second principal dwelling.
I don't mean to interrupt you, is this, is this, we, we could read this too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, like, so did everyone get a chance to actually look at this? Does anyone have any questions around this? Like, I don't wanna, I know that, like, in interest of time, like, you know, because I, I, I really appreciate you reading this for us, but I mean, it's also something we could kind of do too, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Is, I didn't, whereas?
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, I didn't have a, I would've looked at it if there, if there was a link in.
Yeah, no, it was just kind of to discuss, and I, we can also put it on the website, though, so if that's what you prefer to do, we can do that instead.
Hey, uh, quick question for, I guess, for, for Eric. Are we currently in a situation where the septic standards in the Lake Auburn watershed area are different than the septic standards across the rest of the city?
Yes, yes.
Uh, yeah, I think to me, that would be something that certainly within the Taylor Pond watershed area, I would, I would have a personal interest in, in, but I can't speak for the rest of the planning board, but.
An interest in having more stringent standards in the Taylor Pond watershed?
Well, I, I guess I'm curious as to, if it's, you know, if we're worried about runoff, if we're worried about phosphorus, if, you know, granted, we're not drinking the Taylor Pond, but it isn't, certainly is, it's a, it's between the fishing and the, the economic impact that it has, um, as a natural resource to the city. I would think that, why would we not want to apply the same standards, um, uh, more broadly?
Yeah, and I, I think that would be important to have, um, an open policy discussion about. We do have a lot of standards that are more stringent in the Taylor Pond watershed than they are outside of either lake watershed. But, uh, that's not one that I've heard proposed in the Taylor Pond watershed. Um, but it is unique in that we have city sewer around so much of Taylor Pond that we don't have around Lake Auburn.
Okay, maybe, maybe it becomes a, you know, based on the number, you know, it's just, it's not worth it, but thank you.
No, it, it very well may be worth discussing, I just, it's not something that we've contemplated to date.
Yeah, so in the interest of efficiency, do we want to actually have this on our next planning board meeting? And that way all of us can review this, digest it. Catherine, you don't have to read it to us again, you know what I mean? And then we can, you know, bring it forward and, like, ask any questions? Like, what do you guys think about that?
I like the idea.
I'm sorry?
I like the idea.
Okay.
Agreed, but just a question on, where are we with the comprehensive plan funding at this point? It's in the CIP, uh?
It's in, it's in the CIP, um, and I think, uh, there's been, there's, there's some revisions being made still through that, uh, council process. Um, at last check, there is still funding there for a comprehensive plan, um, update or rewrite potentially. And it's also possible that that could be split between two, two budget years as well, given the timing. But, um, as far as I know, it's still in there to kick that process off, uh, this fall.
Okay, great, any other questions before we move on to the next workshop? Okay, um, yeah, so LD two thousand and three workshop, so some great packets, some great information in our packet. Yeah, so.
Hey, I'm getting there.
This may feel repetitive to those of you that have been on that committee already. Stacy and Riley have been working as part of that group to, uh, to come up with some direction for staff to, to work on drafting. We did want to give you a quick update on it, we won't spend a lot of time. Um, I know that the, uh, the PowerPoint was in your packet. There were some sort of key questions that we needed direction on in order to draft something that can eventually be considered by, by the whole board. We, we know is that we have to allow four units, um, inside the growth zone. Um, you have to allow up to three units in certain cases outside the growth zone. Um, here's the, uh, here's the PDF of it. So, um, for background information, we've outlined the LD, uh, two LDs, um, and then the law that, um, is now in effect. The city was in compliance with much of LD two thousand and three within the form-based code areas. And, um, we can go through these questions that the, uh, the group was working through. Can you scroll back to?
Yep.
One more? So, um, we have to allow up to four units in zones that we've traditionally only allowed single families in, um, especially in the growth zone. So we'll be working to do that. I think one of the questions that was highlighted on the next slide is, um, at, the, the city has some latitude in how they use minimum lot size as it relates to additional units. Um, at the very most stringent the city can be, um, you can require the same lot size. Well, for the first accessory unit, you can only require the lot size that's required of a single-family home. So if you require ten thousand as a minimum lot size, um, you can have up to two units on a ten thousand square foot lot in the growth zone. Uh, when you go above that, you can require as much as the same lot area for the first unit for each additional unit. So, um, urban residential is probably a good example on the bottom here. You can build a single or a two-family on a ten thousand square foot lot. But if you're going to the third unit, you can require the ten thousand again, and a fourth unit, ten thousand again after that. What we've been talking about doing is we have, we have some zones that require the same amount for, um, the second unit, it to, basically the land area to be doubled for the second unit. And then we have other zones like the urban residential zone that have a smaller lot size increment for each additional unit after the first one. Um, and in that case, it's ten thousand for the first one. The new LD two thousand and three requires us to allow a second unit, an accessory unit, on the same size lot, so ten thousand for one or two. And then you, um, the way that our ordinance is currently structured, it's ten thousand for the first one and second one, two thousand additional square feet of land area for each additional unit. Um, and that's how we've used the, um, sort of in-town zoning districts. When you get to suburban residential, um, rural residential and low-density country residential, we have traditionally, um, if it's a three-acre minimum in LDCR, we've traditionally required six acres for two units, um, until a couple of years ago when we adopted the, um, accessory dwelling unit standard. Um, I think where the group is landing is that, um, we have to allow two units, um, outside the Lake Auburn watershed on the same size as we require for a single family. Auburn watershed on the same size as we require for a single family. But beyond that, I think where we're leaning towards is requiring half of the minimum lot size for the first unit for each additional one after that.
Yes, what do you guys think? Does that make sense? I know that there was a lot of, I mean, a lot of information, but I think it was pretty basic.
Well, back to the Taylor Pond issue, we also had talked about in, in some places, like the Taylor Pond overlay, to do the same thing as suburban res and rural res, and require the same amount of square footage for a second, making it more restrictive and harder to build in that overlay.
We, we've started to draft that, so I'm glad you brought that up. It's basically to require the same lot size for each additional unit as is required for the, for the first one, in the Taylor Pond watershed, and not have any reduced lot area for additional units.
And elsewhere, kind of taking a more, kind of middle-of-the-road approach that is in line with LD 2003, allows some flexibility, but doesn't, but doesn't require exactly the same lot size as the following, or as the, as the first lot for the remainder, in the interest of containing development towards the existing core.
All right, coming back, I just wanna make sure we're addressing each thing, and maybe, just the way my brain works. So you, if you go up to the first green slide, right? So the first green slide is not including the Taylor Pond watershed, right?
Are you?
Keep, keep, keep going.
This one?
Right there, yeah.
Okay. This is just kind of an example of, so yeah, apply this approach in the Taylor Pond watershed. So as a-
I'm sorry, it does or it doesn't?
At this, the one that we're thinking of applying in the Taylor Pond watershed, I think is requiring the same amount of lot area for the subsequent lots as we do for the first.
The top, top example.
So those, yeah, those are two examples, the one up top, where the three houses need that much more space compared to the one below would be the one that we'd use, that's currently being used in suburban residential, rural residential, low-density, country.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I wanna, because I got it, like, I was on this, and I got a little confused listening to them, so I just wanted to make sure everyone else was on.
So the, the, the top, that top example, above the red line, would be that what we, where it requires the same amount for additional units, so that's more restrictive per lot, so.
Correct, yeah, yep, yep, yep.
Hypothetically prevent development in that overlay.
It's as restrictive as LD 2003 allows you to be.
Oh, so are these two, are the two green, this slide and the other one showing the third, that, that sort of the extra house in, in yellow, the two options that we're considering, or is one, this is the way it currently is, and this is how we are potentially interpreting it?
The, the, what, the slide before this doesn't have the yellow, the yellow house on it, but those are allowed no matter what underneath the, by LD 2003. So those are already, this, this is not really an option. This, these two options, the, the slide after this is, is more useful than this. These two options don't show that a house can be built on the same property, on the same 10,000 square feet, regardless of the overlay. So it's like this one, where that little yellow house is allowed by LD 2003 in any, in any situation.
So we should stick and look at the yellow houses then?
Yeah, yeah. The yellow house is meant to show the accessory dwelling unit that's currently allowed, that in the interest of illustrating LD 2003, I didn't add the first time, but now I'm adding just to have the accurate representation of the whole, the whole lot.
And we're not really choosing between the two, we're choosing where to apply which ones, so we could choose to apply the more restrictive one in the Taylor Pond watershed, because it's, it is already being used as written now anyway, unless it gets changed. And somewhat, we are allowed to in other districts as well, the, the rural residential, low-density, and suburban. But we could, we could do that, the bottom option, where less, you don't need the same size footprint for each building, which would increase density. But where, that we were saying, the Taylor Pond watershed to be as restrictive as we can be, and use the maximum required area that LD 2003 lets us.
Okay, so, so really, the first one was a description of the two choices that need to be made, whereas the second one is how we think we might apply it.
Yeah, because that little yellow house can be built anywhere, in every zone now, anyway. But as of 2003, does LD 2003 says we have to have a ADU, or the ability to build an ADU on the same footprint.
So looking at the diagram we have, and going down to the elsewhere in the city, and I, did I hear that maybe what's being suggested, we stay with the, whatever the lot size is for the existing plus the ADU? But if you add now a second dwelling, that would go half the minimum lot size, so if the first is 10, the second would be 15?
Yes.
So I, I guess that I see here, the third is actually listed as require 14, 14,000 would.
So that was a typo that has been corrected in the presentation, but yeah, in the printed one.
So we're gonna be up to 20,000, I'm assuming, for that?
If you're talking about a 10,000 square foot lot, yep.
Okay.
The, the other piece that's changed here, so if you were in the urban residential zone, that 14,000 would be the standard for this type of development. But when you get to the suburban residential, the low-density country, and the rural residential, then that's where we're talking about using the half the minimum lot size for the third and subsequent unit.
I'm all for the most restrictive interpretation or definition of LD 2003 with the Taylor Pond watershed. My question is practicality. I'm very familiar with Taylor Pond's layout and the buildings on it. I know the eastern shore is packed tight. How many, if, if you guys even have a number, practically speaking, maybe around Taylor Pond or even in the city, how many properties due to their lot size and existing structures on said lot and within eligible zones, could we see construction compliant with LD 2003 occur?
So quantitate?
Yeah, quantify, both of them, yeah. Like, the eastern shore of Taylor Pond, especially on the southern end, is like sardines. So I don't know, I, this needs to happen, but I'm just thinking, as a citizen of Auburn, where am I apt to see these changes occur? How many properties truly are eligible due to size, zoning, and what is already existing on the property?
Man, and even topography on the north end with the-
Yeah, but topography, I mean, there's some places in Taylor Pond, you know, a beaver couldn't even build, so.
Yeah, we, we have not done that level of analysis in the Taylor Pond watershed the way that we did in the Lake Auburn.
Fair enough. How about within the city? You have a ballpark.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the majority of single-family homes.
I'm just saying, there's, there's limiting factors, because you think, you, you need to have a lot that's X size, so we're talking about pre-existing lots, how many lot sizes, and then I, you know, you can just go on and on and on. I'm just thinking, practically speaking, where are we gonna see these things occur?
So practically speaking, they can occur anywhere, because right now, that little yellow house can be built on every property in the city. That ADU by LD 2003 can be built even in those, well, I guess not because of setbacks, it wouldn't technically, but-
Most lots, though.
Yeah, there, that is, that would be every property.
Yeah, most residential lots could accommodate an ADU. I'm sure, I know there are some that can't. And Taylor Pond, that eastern shore would probably be a concentration of those that, you know, are too small, too tight to meet shoreline standards and expand, but a lot of them could, in that, you know, the Crest Ave neighborhood, a lot of them could accommodate an ADU.
Sorry, I was trying to find my, um-
There would be, it would be the, it would be that, that second black house that would, on the, in this figure here, that wouldn't be able to be built, and the same with the third one, is the more we restrict it, or the larger the area per additional unit, those are the ones we could prevent. Those yellow ones are by, by that state, it's law now, allowed, permitted.
That's crazy. Nice.
I'm trying to-
State for it.
I'm trying to think of what I could promise you for data for next month, but I think we could, we could do a breakdown of parcels by zoning district and lots.
I'm, I'm not asking you to do that, I just didn't know if those numbers already existed. I'm not gonna burden you with that request, I'm, I was just wondering.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't have it, but I, as Riley said, I think most lots could accommodate one, and the real change is that third and fourth.
Any other questions around this? I know that we, we wanna move on to the road frontage. Any other questions around that? Okay, so what guidance should the City of Auburn give related to road frontage for the first and subsequent dwelling units? So I think here, we can see from this illustrated, this illustration is, you know, one of our questions was, right, you know, one unit, 100 feet, two units, 200 feet, three units, 300 feet. And then obviously, you know, going to the other, which little checkbox, one unit, and then the road frontage staying the same of 100 feet.
Yep, and that, and that's the standard that we use currently for AD, for like ADUs. The guidance basically is that we could, we can require the same, we can require larger lot sizes, but we, the guidance that we're getting from, from our, from legal counsel is that we should not be requiring more road frontage for subsequent units, because it's not within that dimensional standards.
There's a specific exception that allows you to duplicate the lot size for each unit, the density, that does not apply to, to frontage. So just like we've traditionally handled frontage, we have a minimum frontage requirement for district, but we don't multiply that based on different types of use or number of units. And our attorney was fairly confident that that is as stringent as we can be. One of the reasons we raised this is because we have seen mixed guidance on this from, even from Department of Economic and Community Development, but our attorney was pretty confident with their, his interpretation, so.
Okay, well, if that was legal guidance, I'm not entirely sure we have conversation, right?
There is a green checkbox already there, so.
Green checkbox.
I like the green checkbox.
Yeah, right? I mean, hey, listen.
Well, looking at that, that encourages me to suggest that we do need to increase the lot size as we increase the number of units. Because hopefully, as we increase the lot size, that would automatically increase, hopefully, the frontage. You know, we, we talk about tax, tax implications, revenue implications for the city. I'm fearful of what's gonna happen. Some of our neighborhoods, I think, are gonna lose value over time with the, these ADUs, the greater densities, you know, maybe overall, revenue will go up, but I think property, individual property values, over time, I think there's gonna be a decrease.
Okay, so I see the next item on your PowerPoint is, does a boardwalk oversight for three-to-four unit buildings or dwellings, or should such small developments be allowed with a staff review inside the growth zone? So I guess the question is, is, okay, for staff, short and sweet, so does, does LD 2003, are they giving that us, for us to make that recommendation, or is that something you guys are saying, hey, listen, this is an opportunity for us to influence our own zoning ordinance with this kind of a question?
So, yeah, state subdivision law includes the creation of three or more dwelling units as a subdivision, and then it allows for an exemption for communities that have ordinances that meet certain criteria, to review them under their site plan review criteria instead of the subdivision law. We use that exemption to apply those standards with the board, we have, for a lot of multifamily buildings. The question really is, do you want to, these are gonna be more prevalent than they ever have been, the three- and four-unit buildings, and inside our growth zone, do you wanna see all those, review them as a planning board?
So we have that, so, so what, my question to you is, we have the opportunity to influence this, right?
We have the requirement for you to review those now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And under LD 2003, we have the opportunity to continue to make a decision around this?
Yep, yep. Yeah, you absolutely can. You also have the option of, you know, deferring that to staff if that's something you wanted, but.
Yeah, what do you guys think?
I'm curious what staff thinks.
That's fair.
Yeah, I, I think on the in-town lots, we're fully able to review those types of smaller developments, three or four units. There's, there's been some state law proposals that would exempt them entirely from subdivision review. So this may happen anyways, if we don't, if we don't change our local ordinance, the state law may change to, to exempt them from subdivision review. We're fine either way. In the amount of time it takes for us to prepare for a planning board meeting, we could complete the review, or we can spend that time in prepping for the planning board meeting for that project. It's, I don't think it's a huge time savings, because we'll have to spend more time on the, you know, the, similar amount of time on the review. It just keeps them off of, off of your agenda, really.
Well, I'll say this, just so you guys know, with growth, with these units, there's gonna be a public hearing, right? So when there's, when there are these units, and if they come before the board, there will be public comment, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Good point.
Are you suggesting that is a good thing or a bad thing?
I'm not suggesting either way.
I would say it's a good thing. I think, I think the public has to begin to understand and be part of this process. So I think that our growth area for Auburn is quite large. We have a lot of existing neighborhoods that could be impacted. So I think that there should be some visibility of what this LD 2003 is really, how it's impacting. And I think it's through a public process of having these types of developments appear that is needed.
Something of consideration.
Just to clarify, with, with regard to three-or-four unit buildings or dwellings, that could be a single building with three or four units, or three or four buildings with a single unit?
Yes, yep, or lots, lot division could also fall under that category.
We, we couldn't take the lot division out of the purview of the planning board, but you, the buildings can be, the state law allows for that.
Let me put a twist on Dave's question. Could that also equate to three or four, four-unit buildings?
It's the, so the state subdivision law would allow for you to defer something like that to staff, but that's not what we're suggesting. So we're suggesting just a unit count of the buildings that are allowed under LD 2003 in traditionally single-family neighborhoods, that up to that fourth unit, we would be comfortable with, but.
But does LD, does LD 2003 allow for that?
State subdivision law does, yeah.
But then, so his question was, did LD 2003, so that's yes or no? Does it allow for it or not?
It does not prohibit it.
Okay.
I don't think it mentions it.
Okay, but it's not prohibited from your understanding?
For multiple units in a building or buildings, yep. It's, is where we have that flexibility, but not on the division of land itself for single-family homes.
So we can say, let's keep it as it is, and if it's a problem, later on?
Or, yeah, if you start having full agendas of three-to-four family buildings.
There are, with not having a road frontage requirement, there's a lot of long, skinny lots in Auburn because of road frontage.
because of road frontage, that this is gonna, yeah, this is going to be a lot of potential development.
Yeah, I guess I would agree with both, with all the comments here tonight, and would want to keep it with us for the time being, just to gauge, you know, what's going on as well as to provide the public with an avenue to know the impact and what's being proposed and what's coming forward.
Yeah, there could be a sudden onslaught of it, and then it taper off, because it's really just going to be the landowners that want to do it anyway.
Okay, cool, all right. Next item is public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward? If so, state your name, five minutes. All right, seeing none. Next item is miscellaneous upcoming agenda items.
Can I add in something from earlier? I don't know if it was clear in our first part, but I would like it if the opening remarks came up as a workshop in our upcoming agenda items so that we could
I would love that.
Come up with a final copy of that.
Perfect.
So that's some homework for all of us, right? If we are concerned.
Yeah, I guess that's true, but yeah, come bring to the workshop with what you think about the opening remarks, and we'll have staff. And actually, if it's possible, I think we asked last meeting, too, if there is a list of things that were not required but highly recommended or prioritized on that list of things in the opening comments. There's some that, I guess this will be part of the workshop that we don't, maybe not.
Yeah, and I think I asked last time, too, like, who else does it? You know what I mean?
On Riley's, the opening remarks, could that be a shareable document where we could all put in our two cents electronically from home as things come into mind?
No, because remember that back to the legal thing, we can't do anything that the public doesn't have access to.
Well, but I mean.
It'd be an illegal meeting.
Come up with a draft.
It would still be like an illegal meeting, because you'd have to do it in front of the public.
You could, I mean, you could advertise it as a meeting.
No, let's just do a workshop.
Or if you have changes, you could email it to staff. And then when that workshop happens, staff could bring it up on the thing so that the whole public could be aware of it. But we couldn't collaborate before that.
All right, so just to recap, so the recommendation is for a workshop for the opening remarks, what other municipalities do it? And to Riley's point, what is kind of a have-to-have versus a nice-to-have versus a fluffy have?
Yeah, but I think, I don't know if it matters what other ordinances, because we just kind of, we already just approved our policies and procedures. So the opening mark's already part of it, so what other communities do it doesn't really matter, right?
Yeah, sometimes I have a hard time letting things go. It's fine, it's fine, but still, I'm like, it wasn't asked, but yeah. All right, so any other agenda items?
Lake Auburn that we talked about, the workshop. I'm not sure of any others.
Anything coming up that has, that you, that the group is going to see for requests for new buildings or anything else?
We will likely have one or two apartment buildings coming up, but not in time for the May meeting. There are some manufacturing discussions going on that we may see later this summer. And nothing, nothing applied for, for planning board for May at this point, I don't think.
Yeah, yep, I just thought that today.
So we will have an application for the Academy Street Apartments, a lot the city's been trying to sell, which is a significant project. I didn't realize we received it in time for the deadline.
All right, no other miscellaneous items. I will seek a motion to adjourn.
No motion.
All those, do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, perfect.